All right, there we go. The time is now 7:06 PM and I will call this meeting to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Reichel?
Here.
Pro Tem Not?
Here.
Trustee Brett Knell?
Here.
Trustee Flores?
Here.
Trustee Hammerhead?
Here.
Trustee Poston?
Here.
Trustee Seifert?
Here.
All right, may we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. The first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Sheila, do we have any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
I did not hear from anyone today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I did not show any raised hands.
All right, thank you. While you're walking by, do we have anybody signed in on the sheet?
No, there's nobody signed in for tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, then we will move on to the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the March 14th, 2022 Board of Trustees Meeting. Resolution number eight, series 2022, a resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Trustees for the services of Sonny Fernandez as a former trustee and town representative, and recognizing April 15th, 2022, as Sonny Fernandez Day in the Town of Silt, and the approval of the 2022 intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Silt and Garfield County for mosquito control. Would anyone like to discuss any of those separately or make a motion?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Not to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Trustee Seifert. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with any agenda items tonight?
Nothing here.
No.
None for me? Okay. Agenda changes. We do have one requested by staff to move the discussion of the sale of town property located at 1007 Highway 6 and 24 from towards the end of the meeting to right after the Silt River Preserve master plan discussion. Is that okay with everybody?
That's good.
Okay, all right. Any other agenda changes?
Nope.
All right, then the next item up is the August 20th, 2022 Heyday update, and this will be with Peggy Swank. Would you like to come up and join us?
And Chris is going to join me, too. He's been a member of the committee.
Less moral support than usual.
He's moral support.
Okay, all right.
Good evening, I'm Peggy Swank. I live at 20 Lone Pinion up on Silt Mesa, and I'm just coming to give you an update this evening of what we're planning for 2022. It's going to be our 52nd Silt Heyday. We missed one on 2020. We're hoping this year you will again co-sponsor, and I know I've already seen the first copy of the paperwork. We've asked for one change to it, and we should be doing that shortly. Last year, we got a really late start to our planning because of the fact of what was going on in the area. So, we were struggling trying to get vendors in the park, but considering what we had for vendors and what we were doing in the park, we think that Heyday was a real big success. We still had a lot of people in the park when we closed down at 9 o'clock at night. So, we felt that it was a successful Heyday considering it was the first one back in the park. We were relearning the park, trying to learn a lot of new things. We're now in planning stages. We started planning in February this year for this year's event. It's going to be August 20th. It's a one-day event. We found last year that the residents and families seemed to really enjoy being back in Veterans Park, under the trees, and a little bit cooler there than it was up in the Baseball Diamond. Our plan this year is similar to what we did in 2021. The event will be held at Veterans Park. Our working theme is "Community Grows Here." We've already talked to the Garfield County 4-H Organization, and they're going to be our grand marshals this year. We haven't been able to include the kids for several years because we were so close to the Garfield County Fair. And one of their themes this year is 4-H Grows Here, and so we've been playing with the theme, and our working theme right now is "Community Grows Here," and that's referring to Silt. Okay? We anticipate sending sponsor letters in the near future. Our vendor application forms will be on the town website shortly, if not already. We continue to move forward in our other planning efforts for parade, security, and park layout. It was nice for the team to be back in the smaller park under the trees. Last year, we learned a few things that will help us plan the park layout a little better this year. The Silt Historical Park is planning a breakfast under the trees at 7 o'clock, and will be providing a beer booth like previous years. I think the beer booth runs from 11 o'clock until 9 o'clock when the bands close down.
Yeah.
Okay. We have not reached out to our performers yet, but we've been discussing possibilities our meeting and hoping to have something planned shortly. We know we will be looking at a country western band for evening. That seemed to work real well last year again. We are hoping to utilize the portable stage again this year and hope that it will be available and ready for our use. We are planning a flag raising at the flagpole in the park. We hope to have an honor garden, possibly the support of the Silt officers in getting the flag raised in the park, and that's going to be at 8 o'clock in the morning. That's something that we do early in the day. We're revisiting the parade route and announcing this year because the way that we did it last year, our announcing came after everybody saw everything, so we were announcing to no one. So, we're revisiting that to try and figure out how to make that work better this year because the parade ended up going past the park on both the north and the south side, and we were announcing on the south side after they got all the way around. So, we're going to look at that and see if we can't do something a little easier and a little better this year. We would like to have Fifth Street closed again this year. That's where we put the portable stage. That's also where we put our dumpster. We've also got some things that we're thinking about for the kids that we thought might work well there. We would also like the intersection of Fifth and Grand Avenue closed so that the kids can get over to the playground if they really want to because that expands our space and we don't have to figure out things for them to do in the park at that point. We've found that the kids today don't enjoy the types of games that we enjoyed and the races that we enjoyed when we were young, and I'm going back a lot of years. So, when we were young, and the insurance company also doesn't like some of the games that we played when we were young.
The three-legged race, huh? They don't like that, do they?
Three-legged wheelbarrow race, nah. Nah, they don't like any of them. So, we're looking for other options to keep the kids entertained during the day, you know, and it may be, we've got some yard games that we used up on the Baseball Diamond a few years ago, and maybe we'll go back to having some of those available. Last year, we were cautious about those because the COVID risk was still reasonably high in the area, and we're waiting to see what's going on with that type of stuff. And we may have to revise things depending on what's going to happen this summer, too. Vintage baseball is going to be back. Cornhole is going to be here. Horseshoes is going to be here. We're looking for, Justin's looking for somebody for us to run the cornhole. We're hoping that Alpine Tire sponsors it again this year because it allowed us to buy some extra cornhole boards last year. The vintage baseball game is going to be held at across from the Historical Park in the old, was it a soccer field or what was it down there next to the old gym?
Oh, the old Rory Moore Field?
Yeah, in the old Rory Moore Field. So, that's going to be there, and the quilt show is scheduled to happen at the Historical Park that same day. We're hoping that the Fire District will again be holding their open house for Silt this year in the park. At our closing meeting last year in October, they showed interest, but we've not heard yet this year. I've got a message out to Levy because I know he used to be on the board for the Fire District to find out if they're really going to be there because the fire trucks are really a big draw for the kids. Okay? Having them in the park is a lot of fun for a lot of the kids. We hope to have sufficient vendors in the park this year for food throughout the day and into the evening, and have not considered doing a fundraising event for the evening program. When we first planned this for 2020, we were going to incorporate a pig roast for the evening. We're not planning it on that at this point. We just want to get ourselves back and on track, you know, ourselves moving forward with this. I got out to a few of the craft fairs, and I've got some of these if any of you want them. We handed these out to craft vendors last December, just telling them when the day was to hold it and make sure that they were aware of what was going on with Silt Heyday this year. Gift items provided by vendors will be used as game prizes auctioned at the Silent Auction, which supports the Historical Society and are given away free in the park. Last year, we raised quite a bit of funds for the Historical Park just by Heyday, between there, the auction between money given for both the cornhole and the horseshoes tournaments, money given for the beer booth, and all of the other events that we had going on in the park, the Historical Park. We tried to help the Historical Park as much as we could. We will need your help the week preceding that date in the park with maintenance, getting tents set up, and the tables moved to the park. Having Sheila and Hope on the committee over the last few years has been an asset, but then we also have the support of the office staff, the planning and development staff, and preparing early for Heyday, and I can't tell you how important the police presence is in the park during Heyday. So, we always appreciate the help that the Town of Silt and the Board of Trustees provides for us, and we're hoping that you're going to be willing to do that for us again this year. Okay? I brought copies in case any, last year only one person requested it. I brought copies of last year's budget if anybody wants to see what we did for budgeting last year. We basically broke even. We made just a little bit, I think $100, but we basically broke even. We were happy with what we were able to do.
Sure, yeah.
Okay?
Good.
And the only thing I'd like to add to it is we have a couple of new volunteers, or basically a family of volunteers, who wants to be really involved with the parade, so I'm kind of excited for it because, you know, to inject some new blood into it and to try to, you know, help make it a better event, and, you know, we'd also like to get the Chamber more involved within this year.
And I'm always bugging people to tell them that, hey, guys, I've been doing this since 96. I'm getting old. Somebody else needs to step up and help us with it, too.
Looks like he's right next to you.
Yeah. But I don't think he likes playing with databases and things like that, and I've got it all in a database.
Have you reached out to the Chamber about their help?
Not yet.
Should get on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And then how's? Sooner rather than later.
Oh, yeah, for sure. How's the vendor list looking? Do we have vendors already committed yet or no?
I've got one vendor truly committed, but I think we only got the thing up on the website, and I'm planning on going through the vendor list this next week after Easter and starting to send out some vendor forms. I had several people that said they were interested when I contacted them last December.
Good.
Okay, so, but it's been a while. I'd like to get something in the newspapers, but it's been real difficult over the last several years trying to get anything in the newspapers that they'll publish.
Have you talked to the town staff about possibly doing, I don't know if our Gov. Text program would be a decent outlet to maybe get some information about Heydays out to our citizens, whether, you know, you might have some.
Oh, that's a good idea. I hadn't thought about that. We put stuff on your website. We've been utilizing your website for the last several years. We also utilize the Silt Historical Park website. We've got a Facebook page that was developed last year by Sydney, I'm trying to think, Reynolds, and Tila.
Robinson.
No, not Robinson anymore. Forehand?
Yes.
Forehand this year says she's got more experience on website development and Facebook pages, and so she may come on board and help us with that. Last year, we were sort of fumbling around trying to figure out how to get it developed.
Yep, got it. So, anyway, cool. And yes, the board, I'm sure the board will be more than happy to help support. We love Heydays.
Like we have in the past, yeah, for sure.
It's been fun.
Yeah, you guys do a good job.
Yeah, for sure. What's the easiest way for a potential sponsor to get hold of the Heydays Committee?
I've got, I've got my, I don't think I've got it on this note. My phone number is 970-876-5861. I utilize that phone mostly for Heyday calls. We've got a Gmail account, siltheyday21, and I'm still using that same one, at gmail.com.
All right.
And I've been watching that on a regular basis.
Okay.
And I think that information is all published here, so I'm going to make sure that I leave some of these available for you guys just in case you want to.
All right, thank you very much, yeah. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, people can also call myself, Sheila, here at Town Hall since I'm a liaison between the town and the Heyday Committee to relay information to them as well.
All right. People always like multiple contact points, and I think we've got that covered, so.
Yep.
Deal.
Okay.
The next thing that I need to reach out before we wait too long is Garfield County Health. One of the things that we know is we're trying to utilize food vendors that are already approved by Garfield County Health, but we need to have them in the loop early on.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Does staff need any direction or anything, or are you guys looking at the letter? It looks like everything's status quo, moving along.
Pretty plugged in.
Okay. All right, all right.
I'll leave some of these with you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
Chris speaks, Chris.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Some copies of last year's check.
Sure.
Bank account's a little higher than that, and I'm assuming that somebody didn't cash a check, so I've got to go back and dig.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Peggy.
Okay, thank you. Can I still listen to you?
Yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah, good.
All right. Brad?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance number eight, series 2022, an ordinance of the Town of Silt, Colorado granting a gas and electric franchise to Public Services Company of Colorado. I'll turn this over to Attorney Layman and Attorney Den Kinger.
That's right. We've got Jolie Den Kinger of our Town Attorney's Office and Brad McLeod with Xcel Energy here tonight to talk a little bit about the franchise agreement, which we've been working on for a while. And if quality can be measured in the number of pages, we probably have a few here.
Yeah, well.
I think this is a typical franchise agreement, right?
It's a pretty standard length.
Yeah, exactly. So, I'll turn it over to Jolie.
Thank you, Jeff. Mayor, trustees, thanks for having us tonight and for putting this on your agenda. Brad McLeod with me, as Jeff mentioned. He's the area manager of Community Relations for Western Colorado, so he works with a lot of towns and cities in the area on agreements and other Xcel matters. As the memo, the cover memo in your packet points out, we've been working with Xcel on this agreement for the past several months, and we talked to you all, I talked to you all about it, I think a few months ago, earlier this year, in a session about the town's priorities. And so Jeff and I have been working with Xcel on it and reached an agreement last month, and the result of all those negotiations and talks is in the actual franchise agreement itself, which is an attachment to the ordinance. It comes in the packet after it, and you can see all of the issues that are covered there. I just wanted to go over a few highlights, which is that the term of this new agreement is for 15 years, so subject to approval by you all through the ordinance that's up for first reading tonight. It would take effect on April 30th of this year, and it would terminate on April 29th to 2037. Wow, that seems like a long time from now. It's a non-exclusive grant of franchise, which is required under the town's charter, so it gives Xcel the right to use town streets, town utility easements, and other town property to provide gas and electric service to folks throughout the town, including to the town itself as a customer, and it allows Xcel to install, maintain, and operate their facilities throughout the town in a way that's reasonably necessary to do that. The 3% franchise fee that's in there, as we've discussed, is the standard franchise fee, and it's 3% of all gross revenues of the sale of gas and electricity to customers within the town. And it also gives Xcel the right to provide street lighting service and traffic signal lighting services in the town at the town's discretion. It also covers the maintenance and allocation of funds to an undergrounding fund, which pays for certain expenses of moving electric distribution lines underground in specified circumstances, which are in the agreement. Additionally, I just wanted to point out that although, as Jeff mentioned, there's a lot of text here in the agreement, there is another important set of, I guess, they're not regulations, they're tariffs that cover the terms on which the company provides gas and electric service to all its customers, including the town and any customers within the town. So, that's another important source of governance for Xcel's relationship with the town and the customers within the town.
Are those federal regulations or are those state regulations?
Primarily the state regulations.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, some of the things in there may be governed by federal regulations, but they're tariff sheets that Xcel is required to publish and maintain under state law, mostly. And those are all, those are actually publicly posted. You can go and read the hundreds and hundreds of pages of them on Xcel's website and the PUC's website if you'd like. And so those tariffs address a few things that are also part of the agreement, but in a more specific way, such as the street lighting service, including the repair and replacement of streetlights, and there are certain provisions in the tariffs about indemnity and liability where the town is a customer and other aspects of Xcel's service within the town. So, going forward, just for you all to know and for us as town attorneys to know, that's an important source as well of governance for this relationship. So, this agreement and the process we've used to reach it complies with the provisions of section 9-4 of the town's Home Rule Charter, which has a list of a few specific things that are necessary for granting a utility franchise, and those are explained there, the term, the non-exclusivity, and a few other things explained in the memo. And I also wanted to point out that through this franchise agreement discussion, we started a good conversation with Xcel on a few other items that are not in the franchise agreement because that's not the best place for them, but that the town will be discussing and executing separate agreements about, which is painting and beautifying the transformer and equipment boxes in the town, and trenching and opening up town streets. So, those are two very specific things we've talked with Xcel about, and we have some separate agreements going to address those. So, on timing, if the board passes this ordinance tonight on first reading, the second reading would be at the April 25th board meeting, and that would allow the new franchise agreement to be fully approved by ordinance before the existing agreement terminates at the very end of this month. Brad, do you have anything to add?
First off, just I wanted to come and say thank you very much. I've had a great opportunity to get to work with your city manager. Mr. Layman's outstanding to work with. Council and staff has been thorough, but really good to work with in this process, and I do appreciate their time. It is definitely something that takes some negotiation in making sure that we're all in agreement with where we're at. They've also been really good about making sure, you know, we took care of notifying publicly all the notifications it took up to this point to make sure that we're legal in that standard, but I wanted to come and thank you very much for your time tonight, and thank staff, and thank council for the opportunity to work with them.
Thank you as well, Brad. It's been great to work with you and your team.
Thanks.
Mayor, trustees, do you have any questions?
Quick question, I guess, does this change the right-of-ways easement? That stay about the same, like for alleys and everything? Any of that changed in this?
Yeah, so that's a good question. No, this agreement doesn't change the locations or extent of any of the underlying rights of way that the town holds and any of the utility easements. It just sort of re-ups the terms on which Xcel has access to those things, but it won't by itself move or alter any of the underlying rights of way.
Yeah, because I know like behind us is, there's a lot of alleys, so I just want, you know, how the access, the right-of-ways have changed or easements, so, okay.
So, are there any significant changes to this franchise agreement to the one that was negotiated prior?
The previous one that was in effect?
Well, the one that's in effect right now.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
The term is shorter. I believe the other one was a longer term.
It was a 20-year term.
Yeah.
This is a 15-year term, which is non-conforming, but it is in line with your charter.
Yeah.
And that was one of the requests, to just have it so they could have an earlier revisit of the terms of the franchise agreement, and we were more than happy to apply.
What's the current franchise fee right now?
It was just 3%.
It's also 3%.
It's also 3%.
Yeah, that fee has been pretty standard for some time, I think, for almost all cities and towns throughout the state, and so hasn't really changed. I believe we clarified the threshold for an audit, an underpayment repayment to the town. I believe we made that a slightly lower threshold so that the town is.
Paid more often?
Well, no, it's just that, it's just if there were an audit, right?
Oh, okay.
I, the agreement has been restructured a lot because the one that was reached before was in a much older format, and so this one has been restructured to be more consistent with Xcel's agreements, I think with other towns and municipalities, too.
Sure.
I can do, those are the ones that stand out to me. I can do a little more research and do a more specific compare, but it's mostly just an update of the framework for the way that franchises operate now.
Okay, yeah.
I might also add, and you referred to it earlier, so there's the 3% franchise fee, and then additionally, there's a 1%, we call it underground fee, which the town has been able to utilize currently, and you're able to take that with those allocations annually. We pay them in arrears, but those allocations annually, and actually, you can go to, up to the extent of three years out of what we anticipate those franchise, those 1% fees to be as well for undergrounding overhead projects that qualify under the desire of the city.
I also believe that the provisions in Article 14 about environment and conservation, which are sort of voluntary consultation measures that the town can take if it wants to, those are new because those really weren't a thing when the last franchise agreement was negotiated.
That has changed in the last 20 years.
Yeah.
So, with all of the infrastructure that's in the Town of Silt, so all of the electrical infrastructure that's in place, and then all of the natural gas lines that are in place, that's all owned by the town, right? Or is that owned by Xcel?
Those are our utility infrastructure.
Those are your utilities. So, I was just curious, like the way that this process goes through, you know, so when you start negotiating with the town months ago to put a new franchise agreement in, there is no option for the town to say, hey, like, we want to see what, like, you know, Holy Cross, for example, is, you know, an energy provider here. How does that work, I suppose?
Yeah, well, so the grant of franchise is non-exclusive.
Right.
So, any other electricity or gas provider could come in and execute a franchise agreement with the town if it were interested in acquiring or building utility facilities in the town. So, the agreement does nothing to prevent that, and similarly, it also allows the town, if it wishes, to be its own electric or gas provider, and it preserves the town's power to condemn, including by eminent domain, gas and electric infrastructure in the town. So, that's all still a possibility. I think on the question of, you know, whether there is a second electric provider in the town, whether it's Holy Cross or whether it's the town itself, that's more of like a financial and economic question about whether the economics of providing that service makes sense.
Right.
But the agreement does nothing to change that.
Okay.
That could all still happen.
Got it.
Yeah.
So, just to, kind of goes back to what you just said, so there's nothing in there that would prevent, five years from now, the Town of Silt decides to do a gigantic solar farm. There's nothing in there that would prevent, I mean, just nothing that would prevent us from providing a solar farm and for power, is there, I mean, that's.
Yeah, no, there's nothing in here that prevents. Yeah, no, there's nothing in here that prevents the town from either being a wholesale provider of electricity or retail, if it were to operate its own utility. Yep, that's all preserved.
In Article 10, Sections 10 dot 1 and 10 dot 2, does that include low voltage uses? It doesn't say it doesn't specifically, but, and I'm also wondering about equipment being mounted on the poles.
Sorry, this is 10 dot 2.
10 dot 1 and 10 dot 2. 10 dot 1 is the town use and 10 dot 2 is third-party use.
So you're asking about use fee on the poles?
On the poles.
Specifically...
Data transmission.
In all likelihood, and in most cases, we've, this protects our rights to protect, in most cases, we will not allow for shared use in there, except for on communication lines. So you would have your data potentially, but we'd have to look at each specific case. Obviously, the biggest reason is because we want to make sure we don't kill anybody in the process.
And what about equipment being mounted on the poles?
Depends on what the equipment is. We've evaluated in other communities, but it's pretty outlined in here. I mean, we've got the right to take a look at what we've got. What are you thinking, just anything specifically?
One example would be a wireless network in the downtown area, and usually the poles are the easiest place to do that. You get the best range and there's already power.
We have to evaluate that. It's different for us.
So it is, this clause contains a subject-to-the-tariffs provision, right? And so we'd have to look at the pole attachment things in the tariffs. But I think from the town's perspective, we would certainly evaluate all of the, like, co-location abilities, right, under state law? And I think there are some things spelled out in state law about using utility poles for co-location of various things, and then we would, of course, do as much as the town is legally entitled to do under those things and under this.
My biggest question came to third-party attachments because we run into some other issues there.
And then you're asking about low-power uses too? Under...
You mentioned? Yeah, low power is essentially data.
Like Wi-Fi?
And any sort of data transmission.
Good question. We can do some research on that for second reading if you're interested in it specifically.
That would be great. Thank you.
Can you just explain what you're talking about to me, so I know?
Sure. So we've been talking a little bit about municipal broadband.
Yeah.
Right? And that takes the data to the meet-me centers?
I get using their poles for that. I have no idea what you're talking about when it comes to, like, the low voltage usage and what you're asking him about.
Any wiring that is transmitting data is considered low voltage.
Right, okay.
So is...
So is that just coincide with what you're talking about as far as the...
Yes, it gets it from the middle mile to the last mile. It may be wired, it may be wireless, but if you're, I don't want to get too nerdy here, but if you're shooting a wireless signal long distances, look off in the distance, what do you see? Power poles.
Yeah.
The easiest place to mount that and not have any line-of-sight issues is on top of the poles.
Yeah.
So you get better range and a stronger signal.
So what's the distinction between, like, a third-party user putting their equipment on their pole that you asked about and the low voltage usage, I guess?
It allows the town to contract with third parties to do it for us instead of it requiring town infrastructure. Derek's wireless provider could, in theory, come to the town of Silt and make a bid and proposal to manage the equipment, install it, and we would be able to use the poles to help facilitate that, and the town would not...
So is it just as simple as you're saying, like, you're talking about just putting low voltage wires on their poles, basically?
Wires and/or equipment.
Yeah, got it, okay.
And just to clarify, we'd be talking about potentially stringing some sort of fiber or cable and/or putting some wireless transmitters up on the poles.
And, yes, yes to both. Does that make sense?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, there are just sometimes, honestly, some different rules that apply to, like, stringing wires versus just, like, using the pole for a wireless attachment.
And whether it's fiber versus copper versus coax, there are different cable mediums.
So then what you're asked, so what we're looking at right now is, we want, so we're asking them, or you, right, as our town attorney and then working with them, to have some language in the franchise agreement or to even determine if there can be language in the franchise agreement that we would have the option or ability to contract out with a third party to put their equipment on these poles?
I think it already does. I think Section 10.1 and 10.2 actually do. I'm more asking for confirmation than approval.
Oh, okay, yeah, see, that's what I'm confused. I can't be the only one confused.
I think it does. I'm not a lawyer, we have one here.
Yeah, right.
So I figured we should leverage your expertise and make sure that, you know, when we start to have these discussions with these providers, it would be valuable for the town to know.
Well, because...
We can grant you access to the poles if that makes the implementation of any networking quicker and/or cheaper.
Yeah, no, I'm totally with you because when one says, we'll look into it, okay, great. Like, but then we have our attorney here, right? Like, what's it actually say and what can we do?
What can we do?
And I'm sure you have experience from other municipalities of actually going through this process. I'm sure we're not the first ones, so...
No, we do in some cases. The ones we've actually had in the past was cameras, things like that. In a lot of cases, we have not allowed third-party attachments because we don't have any control of the equipment, we don't, and we are responsible if somebody, something happens up on those lines. However, we do obviously in certain areas have agreed upon access for communication lines on those poles, and so that's where this, I think, would fall. You might be fine.
For communication, not under...
Just to make sure.
Got it.
Which we've even had in the town, Cedar Networks...
Hung on the poles, right?
Got permission from XL to hang...
Correct.
...fiber on the poles. But it's, if you just look at it, XL owns the pole, we can't grant anyone the right to attach to their pole. It's got to go through their approval process, yeah.
Except where those rights might be granted under some state law.
Under some state law, yeah.
So we'll look at that, too.
Now, in a general sense, I'm certainly not a lawyer. That was what I thought these two sections read, but I just wanted to check with the subject matter experts to make sure that's what it means.
The equipment question is the only one that I'm really a little curious on. I definitely need to clarify.
And we will do that checking for you and have some discussion and confirm at the next meeting.
Thank you.
I have two questions. Hopefully, they're both simple questions. So if we have a residential homeowner or even a business that has solar on their building, they're making more power than they're consuming, so they're selling it back to the grid, in theory, XL is selling that energy to somebody, I mean, you could say it's in Silt or it's out of Silt, do we get any money based off that sale of that extra energy that's being delivered to the grid?
Any of the power, any of the energy, as you can look in this, that we sell back to the community and to the customers, you make the 3% on the revenues of any revenues we raise through the sale of power, so it would be irrelevant. I, well, I would look at, to make it, I would make sure I'd get a legal definition for you, but it's irrelevant whether or not it's power derived from private solar or power derived from anywhere else on the grid we pull it from.
So if it comes from your grid to customer A or their neighbors to customer A, customer A's using it, we get the franchise fee?
Yeah.
I don't have solar on my house. Does XL allow that? Like, if a solar user produces more energy than they're using, does it get kicked back into the grid and you get...
It depends on which program when they come in.
But there are some that XL has?
There are some.
Here locally, okay.
And then my second question would be for our attorney. If XL, for some reason, got bought, sold, goes bankrupt, do we renegotiate this with the new power provider, or do they get to take over these terms if it's within the next 15 years?
There should be an assignment provision in here. Brad, do you know exactly where that is?
I don't, I would have to look at it.
They're, oh, wait, successors in the signs, 21.2.
I don't know which number. I know it should be there.
The agreement can be assigned, so Article 15 also controls this. The consent of the town is required, basically, so the... So the franchise can be assigned by merger, right? So if XL merges with a third party, then it just becomes the agreement between the town of Silt and XL plus Big Giant Energy Co., right? But other than that, except for mergers with a third party or whether, if it's required by legislation or regulatory requirements, the town has to consent and has to approve the transfer or assignment in writing. So there's a process that has to happen under Article, under Article 15, and there's also a transfer fee process in here.
15.1, 2.
Yep, so it's 15 dot 1 and 15 dot 2. And then if you look at 21 dot...
21 dot 2 basically says the same thing, refer back to Article 15.
Yep, so there is a process in there. So there's, there would be a few narrow exceptions where the town wouldn't need to consent to it, but otherwise, the town would need to consent to it.
Okay.
So it would come back to you guys. And also, just as town attorney, if an agreement like this was ever, like, if your electric service provider was ever getting bought out or there was something going on with this agreement, we would make the town aware of that well in advance and sort of bring it to you guys and come up with a plan for how we're going to deal with it. So, but there is, that is definitely addressed in the agreement and gives the town rights. Yep.
All right. I have no further questions.
Nope.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so the time is now 7:47 PM, and I will open up the public hearing in regards to agenda item, the first reading of ordinance number eight, series 2022. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, do we have any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda?
No, I did not hear from anyone today.
Okay, thank you.
I did not show any raised hand.
All right, thank you very much. And would anybody in the public here like to discuss this item? Okay.
I do have one quick comment really quickly, specifically to...
Just a second, let me close the public...
Sorry.
And then we'll give you your chance to hit that side. So the time is now 7:48 PM, and I will close the public hearing for ordinance number eight, series 2022, and open up to further discussion.
I just wanted to have a response officially from our attorney. I just had to during this meeting to get an answer. Trustee Hanran, for your sake, that if they wanted, a third party wanted to attach to the poles, we just need, obviously, as we kind of discussed, enter an agreement with one with XL, and also the town would have to offer permission to occupy the town's right-of-way space. So basically, typically through permit, you would allow them to do so. We would enter an agreement with them on the attachment fees or the attachment agreement, and you'd be good to go.
Perfect. That was quick.
I just want to make sure I got you an official answer before that.
That was quick, yeah.
Lawyers via tax.
Thanks, Brad and Fran.
Come on now.
Nice job, Fran.
2022.
And then the town would, of course, work with that entity for, to do a right-of-way permit and/or like a master license agreement for access to those poles and the right-of-ways. So with, in that sort of scenario, we wouldn't be executing like an additional franchise agreement with an entity like that, but we would enter into some sort of right-of-way permit or licensing agreement with them so we could keep track of what was going in where.
Good deal.
So that just, this is going to take me off-topic from this agenda item there. So if someone came and hung fiber in town on the poles with permission from everywhere that they needed, why wouldn't we enter into a franchise agreement with them?
Um, we could. I mean, it would depend on what service they were providing, though, right? Because I think franchise agreements are pretty specific to regulated utilities, and so some broadband providers typically, well, sort of fall into that category, but sort of don't. But depending on what access that the provider needed and also what regulatory requirements they were subject to, depending on like the specific type of service they were offering, we would evaluate whether a franchise agreement was appropriate or just sort of a licensing and attachment agreement.
Okay.
It just, in like that, in like the whole broadband internet cable space, it really does just depend on like the very specific service definition and the specific type of state and/or federal regulations that they're subject to.
Okay.
There are examples of municipalities that said no to signing such agreements with private vendors. Google specifically, when they were rolling out fiber, this is 10 years ago, there were lots of urban municipalities that said no. So it is, my point is, it's possible. It's unlikely, but not impossible.
Okay.
Anything else?
Anything else on this agenda? Sorry about that.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number eight, series 2022, an ordinance of the town of Silt, Colorado granting a gas and electric franchise to Public Service Company of Colorado.
Second.
All right. Now, we have a motion by Mayor Protem not to approve ordinance number eight, series 2022, as presented, seconded by Trustee Hanran. All who's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
You had that answer really quickly, too. We appreciate that.
My pleasure. My pleasure. I'll thank Fran, I think I got her in the middle of dinner, so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. I'm going to stay up here for the next...
For the next one, too, yeah. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the liquor delivery permit discussion, and I will turn this back over to our attorney.
Thank you. We don't have a specific ordinance or formal resolution or anything like that up for discussion tonight, but this issue came up when we were discussing liquor license renewal, I think, with staff a little while ago, and so just wanted to provide you an update because the state law on allowing on-premises liquor licensees to deliver alcohol and to allow takeout of alcohol changed during the COVID-19 pandemic. So basically, in response to COVID and the impacts on bars and restaurants, in 2020, the state legislature passed what was then a temporary one-year measure allowing bars and restaurants to sell alcohol beverages along with takeout orders for takeout for folks and then also for delivery, right? So Chili's started allowing you to buy margaritas with your food and take them home or have them delivered to you. And then again, in 2021, the legislature updated that law a little bit and extended it until, I believe, right now it's through 2025. But, you know, a lot of us have become accustomed to this way of life, and so it has the potential to be a permanent feature of the state's liquor licensing and permitting framework. So there's currently a state statute that allows certain types of on-premises licensees, so folks who already hold, let's say, a bar and restaurant, or a hotel and restaurant liquor license or a tavern license, to apply to the state to get a permit to allow them to do this takeout and delivery. And the state law has very specific requirements about how that can be done, and then the state has also made some regulations as well. So there's a set of state statutes and state regulations on it. And attached to the memo in your packet is the form that applicants would use at the state, so they would fill out this little form, and basically, they have to certify that the delivery or takeout will only be made to or allowed by someone who's 21 years of age or older, and there's a process for logging and noting, like, the time of delivery and the name and the date of birth of the person who's authorized to receive that delivery. The state statute does allow local jurisdictions to also create a permitting process, so if a locality opts to create a permitting process, then what happens is the licensee has to apply for a state permit to do takeout and delivery, and then they also have to apply for a local permit. However, the state law does not give the localities... However, the state law does not give the localities much additional control over this. So basically, if the licensee meets the requirements of state law and says like, yes, we can do this, yes, we are doing this, the locality does not have really any additional discretion to deny that permit. So that's sort of the state of the law at the state level. And I believe from discussions with staff that there may be a few on-premises licensees in the Town of Silt that already have these state permits and are doing this kind of takeout and delivery. The town hasn't yet created any sort of permit system for takeout and delivery of alcohol, and it hasn't addressed this in its code yet. So as of right now, in the town, all these licensees need to do is fill out this form with the state and send it in and get a state permit and comply with all the state rules and regulations. So going forward, the town has a few options for how to incorporate this into its code and potentially regulate it. The first one is to essentially take no action. So if the town doesn't do anything to amend its code, then the status quo will continue and liquor license holders will just have to apply to the state for this permit and follow the state rules and regulations. The town could create a local permit that sort of mirrors the state permit for this. And then licensees would have to apply for both a state permit and a local permit to do this, which would mean two sets of forms and two sets of fees and all of that. But again, if the licensee meets the requirements of the state law, the town doesn't really have additional discretion to grant or deny the permit. The statute doesn't allow the locality to make up, to adopt like more stringent guidelines. The third option is for the town to reference the state rules and its code and to state that it will enforce them and take them into account when considering liquor license renewals, but without creating a local permit. So the town could amend its code to say that it will investigate violations of the state rules, and it would consider those violations of the state delivery and takeout permit in hearings for liquor license renewals and in revocation proceedings. This would, to be effective, include a requirement to notify the town if you're a licensee within the town and you receive one of these state delivery permits. And in the memo in the packet, I just added a little example of what that code amendment might look like in the town's code. This is just an example, not officially an ordinance or anything up for consideration. Just a provision about notification within 10 days of receiving the permit and then a statement about the town's authority to receive complaints and investigate and then consider violations of the permit rules in the local license renewal hearings and revocation hearings that the town does. So those are basically the three options. And just wanted to present those to you, open it up for discussion. Hear any comments that you had or any questions that you had. I also provided just a little bit of background about delivery by off-premises license holders. So that's under a different state statute. And those off-premises license holders, so that's retail liquor stores, malt beverage off-premises licenses, and liquor licensed drugstores. Those folks have been authorized to deliver alcohol beverages for some time. This was long before COVID. And that's a separate permit. So also, in the packet is an example of the delivery application for off-premises licensees. The state law governing delivery by off-premises licensees does not allow the town to adopt any sort of local permitting authority. So that's just a matter between the state and the licensee. But here, we would just be talking about takeout and delivery of alcohol beverages by on-premises licensees. So, any questions?
So as our legal counsel, is there anyone that would be better than the other for the town? Do you have any, I mean, any recommendation or...?
I vote for no local permit.
I would say, I think my preference would be either one or three. I mean, three, having, enforcing the state permit rules without having our own local permit would probably be a good option. Because then it lets people know who's planning on having that thing so that the officers know to watch this, or whatever they can do. But we don't need to have our own permit because our permit doesn't change what the state does. We don't have any control. It's basically, the state gives them a permit, we have to give them a permit anyway, and our permit virtually mirrors the state's anyway, correct?
Yeah.
So basically, all we're doing if we get a local permit is charging the restaurant an extra, whatever we want to charge them to have the permit. And that's all it is.
And the town would have to administer those applications.
Exactly. So it's more work for the town for an additional fee, which really isn't necessary, I don't think.
I like number three because then we, you know, at least we know they had a violation and then we can use that in decision-making when we upend their permit.
The advantage, one of the advantages to at least the part of option number three about the renewal and revocation hearings is like specifically stating that in the code as one of the criteria for renewal hearings or revocation hearings. So that if the town does have a problem with a licensee, for example, and that entity comes up for renewal, that that's in the town's code as a thing to consider in their renewal or revocation. So I would definitely suggest adopting at least that part of number three. Because I think it would give the town a good tool.
But even if we deny, and they get the permission from the state, so we would just report them to the state with not...
Well, so if you deny their, if the town were to deny their liquor license renewal, then they wouldn't be able to sell liquor or alcohol at all, right? So there's two, there's two sort of types of permission here. There's the original liquor license, and that's like the much bigger process that like a bar or restaurant goes through to apply to the state and apply to the town. It's like a much bigger fee, it's a much more in-depth process. And that's their actual license to sell liquor. And then the permit that we're talking about is sort of an add-on, right?
Give us layers potentially. If we are monitoring that, it could potentially give us layers once we are to approve or not approve their liquor license.
Right. And so if the town denies a renewal of someone's liquor license, then their permit goes away too. Because they can't, their liquor license is what allows them to sell alcohol at all on their premises. And if that's revoked, then they can't operate at all because they can't sell liquor and they also can't deliver it.
Don't we, yeah, don't we get that information already? I mean, like if it's a, they get in trouble for selling to a minor? That information comes to us when they reapply anyway? So if they got in trouble for a delivery thing, wouldn't we hear about that?
The town should hear about it. Again, this is a little news, so we're not, I think towns and cities are not like super clear on all the details of how this gets administered. But I think just throwing in a provision that the town has the authority to consider permit violations in the license renewal process is helpful. In case someone were to come in and argue that the town doesn't have authority to do it because it's a state permit, not a local permit, or something like that. Just kind of helps cover the town's bases if it were to want to deny or revoke someone's liquor license.
Well, I think what you're saying is if we stuck with option one, the local liquor licensing authority wouldn't be able to consider any violations that had come up.
Of the state permit.
Of the state permit. And when they were considering a renewal. And in option three, they would.
That's correct.
And so you'd be relying on the state. And we know that they have, I mean, they're overwhelmed and have not enough resources to handle the work they have already, so. And we're talking about, what, three restaurants? So. Is that right?
I don't know how many.
On-premises.
Yeah, on-premises.
Licenses.
I think we got three right now, yeah.
I'm good with one. Probably go along with three if that's what you guys wanted. Change the code a little bit. My mind, like that just seems so unnecessary to have to have a local code to even be able to consider a violation on the state level. Like, come on. Like, there's so much ridiculous red tape in government. It's just, it just bothers me. Like, anyway, less government. I would go with number one, but if y'all said number three and changed the code, okay.
I'd go with either one or three.
Yeah.
Either way.
I like the protective aspect of number three. Just to have some visibility into it. We don't know what on-prem businesses are going to be here. We say three now. Could be six in five years.
That's the hope.
That'd be great.
Right.
Exactly. It just gives us...
Just giving ourselves those protections without encumbering the businesses with having to go through a completely redundant permitting process and costs. I agree with you. That's ridiculous and unnecessary, and let's just avoid it. But I like the idea of having some protections going forward because we don't know what's showing up in the next five, eight, 10 years.
Exactly.
And it's our responsibility now to protect the town's interests.
So if we did option three, could we at least strike bullet point A from it? Do we really need the restaurants to tell us that they have one? That would be documented with the state, which we should be as a town pulling when we pull their renewal anyway. I just want to make this...
Let me make sure that there's no reason that that's needed. Other towns have adopted this notification provision. So it could be that the state, like, system on this is not helpful.
With it being such a new system, it may be helpful to have them have to do that.
And to Jeff's comment earlier about them being overwhelmed. It may not be malice, it may just be they're drowning.
Yeah, but if they have, if a business has a delivery permit and they're reapplying for the renewal, Sheila contacts the state to see if they've had any violations. And, I mean, if they have a permit, it should be documented somewhere at the state level that they have it.
So we want to figure out whether violations of their permit would be documented in their state file for their license renewal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jeff and I kind of talked about...
Oh.
Oh. I'm sorry. Jeff and I kind of talked about this earlier today that I can make this part of my process when I'm doing a liquor license renewal. I can go onto the state's website and it will tell me who has applied for these to-go permits, these delivery permits, and verify it there along with when I do the sales tax verification and any other things that I feel necessary to approve or deny a renewal.
Okay. So it sounds like Sheila, the notification procedure here is not necessary for you to have this knowledge during the renewal?
I don't think so. I think it's a task I can take on on my end. And the state isn't going to notify us of those, from what I understand, when I reached out to the other clerks on the same scenario.
Okay. I would recommend keeping some version of B and C in there. B is completely at the town's discretion, right? So it would have the authority to receive complaints and, in the town's discretion, investigate whether the licensee has complied with these permit rules under state law. And this is the type of thing that the town doesn't want to have to use. But if in three years, we get a really problematic permit holder and state liquor enforcement is not being responsive, that's helpful to have in there, I think.
Will you clarify B? So when it says the town has the authority to receive complaints regarding any licensee's takeout and delivery permit? So right now, we don't have that as part of our town code. So without that verbiage, are you saying that? What does that mean? Like, if you're saying the state wouldn't tell us if there was an issue or if there was, like, would they be, is that part of, would the state say, is that part of your code? No, oh, I can't tell you. Like, that just, why does that need to be there?
I don't know that the state would say, we can't tell you. It's more a matter of like whether the town could bring someone into municipal court over it, probably. Because if it's not in the town's code, then it's not like covered by, you know, the town's police authority and the town's municipal court authority. So I think that's the thought there.
Got it.
Wouldn't that also be Jolie if someone just down the road said, I saw such-and-such restaurant deliver to my neighbors and their 16-year-old, you know, collected the drink? Could that be anonymous?
Like, yeah, Bob and Sue are out of town and their kids are at home and they ordered takeout and they ordered in a whole bunch of margaritas and signed for them and receiving underage alcohol.
Right.
Yeah. I think that this just gives that, I mean, probably the town, if the town got a complaint, it would look into it. It would also probably report that to the state, like, enforcement authority too. But this just clearly allows the town to do that, even though it's not a town permit.
Yeah. And I like B and C. I just don't, I don't want to charge a restaurant to get a permit in the town. And I don't, I don't want to put the burden on them to call and say, hey, I got a permit. Let's just make it easy.
Absolutely.
That's good.
And the B and C would essentially give the town tools to consider violations of this if things went wrong. But if everything goes how it's supposed to, then the licensee doesn't need to pay any additional fees. The town doesn't need to do any additional work. And this just goes the way it's supposed to.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
And those will just be a change in the section of our current liquor code.
Yeah, we can just do a quick text amendment ordinance. And I'll also check to make sure that I get looped into the, kind of municipal court part of the code as well.
And maybe it's part of their thing where if they get a license, they're required at the state level to let the town know in 10 days.
I didn't see that in the state rules.
I would assume it's probably not. The state's going to do as little as possible.
I didn't see that in the state statute, state rules. But I'll check again to see if there's any way that there's some local coordination required.
All right.
Good deal.
You have good direction?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, and next up is the Silt River Preserve Master Plan with Dave Erickson and Bud Tenchism. Go up there and we'll turn this one over to Director Foner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2021, we facilitated with DHM Design out of Carbondale to do a master plan of the Silt River Preserve with the help of Aspen Valley Land Trust. And Dave Erickson and Bud Tenchism is here to go through that plan. And as you can see, we've got a couple of maps and stuff here, so I will let them talk about it. They go into a little more depth.
Great, well, thanks Trey, and thanks everyone for having us here. And Jeff, good to see you. So I think a lot of you got kind of an update from us in January about some of this work. And so we're bringing it back in front of you today to, I think, basically ask for adoption of this plan or vision, if you can remember, for the Silt River Preserve. So as Trey said, last year, we gathered with a group of stakeholders for the property that are interested in the property and local individuals as well. DHM Design, who I think you guys also contracted with for your parks plan, facilitated some meetings to gather ideas. And then they created this vision out of it, this master plan. It's not an exact blueprint. Obviously, there's flexibility within this plan, but it's meant to be kind of a guiding vision for the property. It also will be a really helpful tool for fundraising and for implementing projects. It's been a great opportunity too, just to gather a lot of partners together on this project. And so we've got a lot of really strong partnerships. Middle Colorado Watershed Council is an example, Roaring Fork Outdoor Volunteers, Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Those are all good examples of some of the partnerships that are actively engaged in projects out here today. And so just to walk you really quick through this plan, which I'm sure most of you have had a chance to look at. It identifies Highwater Farm and the current ag lessee on the property right here. It identifies some ideas to improve the entrance to the property. It shows kind of some of the agricultural fields on the property. It identifies some enhancement to some old ponds and wetlands on the property. It also identifies areas to restore and enhance for native habitat. And then it also depicts a loop trail through the property and some spur trails off of that. And also identifies... And also identifies things like the eagle's nest, eagle nest on the island. And it keys these letters key to on this sheet here, some of the recommended actions and then this also provides kind of a timeline for some of that activity and then also just some examples from the D H M team of what some of these amenities and items could look like out on the property. So again, kind of a guiding vision for things out there. Bud and I had a chance to go out there today, we met with Trey, we met with a contractor who's going to help finish the loop trail on the property. And then we also met with Steve Anthony from Garfield County, he's in the vegetation management department. And he was very just encouraged by all of the progress and work that's gone in out here over the last few years to fight weeds and try to enhance and maintain some healthy vegetation, so there's been some great progress and having a master plan like this will certainly help, like I said, with fundraising and just guiding projects over time and kind of with future management of the property too. So we're also actively engaged right now with a project that's got some grant funding in place. That's being run by the Middle Colorado Watershed Council to look at the water rights and some engineering and some ideas to fix up that pond area and so I think that's going to be a really cool and central piece of this property is really enhancing that area on the property, it'll attract a lot of wildlife. It'll make nice viewing of wildlife for people walking around there. It'll protect some water rights, et cetera, so. Anyways, Bud, do you do you have anything to add to this?
No, I think you covered a lot of it, there's some great projects that are coming out of, like Dave mentioned, this isn't necessarily a blueprint blueprint as much as it is kind of like a north star to follow something to to work towards. There's a lot of flexibility kind of baked into this plan, so as money becomes available, if if things deviate, if one part, one project becomes more of a priority because of funding or because town priorities change. There's there's kind of flexibility built into it, so. This year, the ponds are a big project, finishing the loop trail is a big project, there's already some volunteer opportunities and volunteer dates that are starting to line up for this year. So really exciting stuff, but it's nice just to have one central place, especially for applying for funding. To be able to say there's this this plan, the town was in on it, there was a stakeholder process. It's it's approved by by the Town Board of Trustees, there's multiple stakeholders from A V L T to Middle Colorado Watershed Council that are kind of driving this too, so it's a nice, a nice piece for being able to apply for funding.
Thanks.
Yeah, and you know, I will say it's just been a true pleasure working with Trey and Jeff and the rest of the staff and team on this. There's a lot of good work that's been done out there in the last few years and so I think we're all really proud of that.
How's the eagle's nest out there?
I was just gonna ask that, was it able to get back up or is it just gone? The eagles are nesting on this.
They're still on the other one?
They're on this, yeah, I saw them out there today, sitting on that nest, I don't know if there, what was going on in this nest, I hadn't been out there till today. This year, but they're sitting on this nest.
And the egg that was found in the nest that blew down, we're not 100% sure if it was an egg from this year. Or it could have been an egg from a year or two ago when they nested out there that never hatched.
Yep.
So. Not 100% sure what the status is of eggs and because usually they have two. Most of the time they lay two eggs out there or they have in the past. And we've had two most years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sweet.
So yeah, any questions or comments or anything from you guys?
Just as the plan is laid out, are they prior like prioritize areas that you could see making it happen a little faster than others?
Yeah. There's a, this table, I don't have it totally memorized right now, but has some prioritization built into that timeline right here in the middle of this sheet? And so that that's kind of to help with some of that. But I think for us right now, the ponds, finishing the trail through the property, managing weeds and keeping up with some of the irrigation and reseeding that we did last year with Trey and his team.
Yeah, we did this part that's down here last year, we was able to get irrigation to it and we ripped it completely up and drilled new seed and broadcast new seed and mulched it. And now we have irrigation down there, so hopefully we get some, something besides weeds growing down there.
Yeah, and Bud and I and Trey have talked to another project that we want to do this year, we've got some folks working on some bids is just to create some nice entrance signs with maybe something like this on there as well as kind of a aerial map showing the trail that exists out there today. And some interpretive information like, let's say about the eagles or the native fish in the river or some of the other critters that are out there, so kind of more of a trail head kind of idea.
Yeah.
So if someone drives out there and they've never been there, they can get a sense of, okay, here's the boundary, here's where I can walk. There'll be a nice mulch trail to follow, et cetera. So that's definitely one of the priorities this year for for us that we've been working on.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Almost need like a big sign out there that says, hey, like turn here, come look.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, really, I think a lot of people just don't know that that's like a public place to go, it looks private.
Yeah, that's kind of what's so special about it too, is just there's not many spots that are public that feel that way where you can just go walk freely.
Right.
Yeah, so it's it's a real, it's a neat thing, I mean, like I said, it's been a joy working with the town of Silt on this and it's a very special piece of property from that respect. There's nothing really like it around here.
I agree.
Yeah.
What do you guys need from us?
Just a a vote, right, on adopting the plan is kind of what we're looking for now.
How long is the the perimeter trail?
This trail here would be probably about a mile and a half.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, it's more in that range. Uh huh.
And then, so this is a preserve, but are the wetlands within the preserve a designated wetlands? Because I know once you go to designated wetlands, it makes us, you can't, you know, you can't walk so close to it.
Yeah, you know, if it's jurisdictional wetlands, then it's just basically you can't film, you can't you know, harm them so to speak, but you could have walking paths and things like that, so. I don't think anything we're doing here really require us to go to any lengths in terms of permits, but that's certainly something we'll look at with some of the consultants that we've worked on with this plan.
Okay.
If we get funding to move forward on the restoration of some of those areas.
Okay.
Yeah, but no big hangups or anything.
No big hangups on anything, okay.
Yeah.
Good question, that's a good question, I didn't think about that.
Wetlands can be tough.
Yeah.
I think right now the ponds are all recognized as ponds.
Yeah.
And not necessarily as wetlands.
Yeah, in creating wetlands, they would love. That's good, yeah.
And there's some chances to create some wetlands out there in certain areas. Because the majority of the wetlands that were out there or that are out there was bad irrigation practice, ditches leaking and things of that nature. So they weren't natural wetlands, so to speak.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And we toured the farm today too and it's incredible what they've managed to do with their.
How's that look? You know, I've still never been there.
Yeah, it looks really good.
It does look good, yeah.
Yeah, no, they have a, you know, a hundred foot long high tunnel there now that's just getting ready to go for the growing season and you know, she's going to hire, what, 10 youth from the local high schools to work out there this summer and get some job skills and she's got some other, you know, young, early twenties farm managers and it's really cool. And I think I, let's see, 60 or 70 people signed up for the CSA already this year? It's Bud's wife, so he can tell.
We've noticed her a couple times, she's coming.
Like, oh, you're doing fine.
Yeah.
I recuse myself from that part.
Yeah, you still want to get misinformation and get in trouble there.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah. But no, she's she's great, she's amazing, what she's done, it's it's really neat. Yeah.
I think one thing that, well, I don't think, Trey and I talked today actually about kind of nailing down the priorities out there a little more so that we can better fold them into the Parks Recreation and Culture Subcommittee and and, you know, kind of help, help with trying to find funding.
That's great.
So.
And Jeff knows too, I mean, you guys probably know Dan Young, you know, he's a local citizen here, he's an artist, he spends a lot of time out here and he is a wealth of knowledge about this piece of ground. He has photographed every type of animal you can imagine that could be out here, from mink to river otter to deer, to all types of birds, to lots and lots of things. He's a really well, an amazing wealth of knowledge for this place and.
Cool.
Um, yeah, uh huh, and so we thought maybe he'd be willing even getting some of his photos to put on some of the interpretive signs could be a really neat thing for the property and the project.
Good. I didn't know there's a river otter over there. That's really neat.
Yeah.
All right. Jeff, could we do anything on the website or social media to help grow awareness or in lieu of putting up a big sign?
This plan is on the town website. These maps and that document that you got, they're all on the town website.
And this is close to my heart, but I would say engaging with the schools to be able to bring kids out here throughout the year and and tie it to their curriculum would be a really cool thing. I'm sure some of them are doing it, but just something to keep in mind.
When you get the kids out there, then they'll want to drag their parents later, hopefully.
That's right, yeah, it's just a powerful outdoor classroom just to learn about this area in general. Yeah.
I think you're right, we could, you know, I've said for a while, we could do a better job of inviting people out there, that's why we did our ice cream social and kite flying event out there last year and we blew away. It was so windy.
Good for kites, not good for ice cream.
It was crazy.
I'm thinking more like using social media to track outcomes when things are getting done, when some of these line items in the middle of that bottom sheet get done.
Yeah.
Throw something up on Facebook. And maybe link back to the town of Silt website, but at least try and grow that awareness.
Yeah.
Okay.
Agreed.
You guys like it?
I do.
Very much.
Yeah, me too.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the Silt River Preserve Master Plan as presented.
I second.
Motion by trustee Seifert to approve the Silt River Preserve Master Plan as presented, second by trustee Poston. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it so much for having us.
Good job.
Thanks for coming in.
Good work, guys.
Thanks, you guys, you didn't buy into that hour wait.
All right, this is where we're going to have an agenda change, we're going to go ahead and jump to the discussion of the sale of town property located at 1007 Highway 624. And we will turn this over to Attorney Sawyer. Or Sheila, since that's who we're looking at.
Hi Sheila.
Is Attorney Sawyer with us?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
Maybe it's not an agenda change.
Here he comes now.
He's in the waiting room.
It's like he's psychic.
Sheila, do we have anybody else? Is Joe Carpenter on with us?
I believe Joe is here, but I don't know who else you're expecting, Jeff.
Perfect.
We have a gentleman named Brad.
Soon as Mike's ready, he can kick things off.
So is he connecting to the audio?
I was probably a little slow in texting him, telling him we'd be, we were ready. You guys were quick with that last one, so.
Is he still connected?
It looks like he might have tried to come in with his cellphone, Jeff, is he, do you see the number listed on the screen?
3093655.
That could be one of the realtors.
Oh, that's Brad.
I see his face.
And Joe Carpenter says he's, it's not allowing me to unmute, so.
He don't have him as a co-host, so when it gets to him, I'll unmute him.
Okay. I figured as much.
There's Attorney Sawyer. We're going to go ahead and turn this one over to you for the discussion of the sale of the town property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the possibly the best way to start this would be to have the realtors who have structured this proposed transaction to give a presentation to the town. I guess just real quick, this involves the property next to the come and go. The town has, you know, acquired that property specifically for the purpose of economic development with the intent of having a retail, sales tax producing business go in that is not marijuana related. And, you know, to that end, the town has retained the services of Joe Carpenter who has worked to try and find prospective buyers. We do have a draft contract that was received. There are questions left open by the proposal that's been submitted. The buyer is in fact not the intended end user of the property, but rather a development entity that goes out and acquires sites and develops them for a as at least what we have been told, an end national retailer user. The offer that's been submitted is not for the asking price. It's about a quarter less than the price that the town has the property on the market for. That may be an acceptable trade off if we had sufficient knowledge that this property was going to generate sales tax and cover that deficit over a short period of time. You know, Jeff in his materials that were submitted and I prepared for you a privileged memorandum about this transaction and some things that should be explored. So I I think the best thing at this time is to to ask the realtors to provide the board with a introduction to the proposal. The merits of, you know, why this is being brought forward, the benefits to the town. And then to provide an opportunity for the board to ask questions. We have provided for an executive session that we can go into to discuss both legal advice and direction from you, the board members as to negotiations that you may desire to undertake on this proposal.
Mr. Mayor, we've got Brad Lassiter and Dave Murdock. I think both are on this, can talk about this offer along with Joe Carpenter. So if you're ready, I can ask Amy to unmute them.
Yes, I think we're ready.
Amy, did you catch?
Okay, so I can unmute Joe, but I don't, and I can, I see Brad, I can unmute him, but I don't know which telephone number would be the other gentleman.
Okay. Maybe Joe.
Area code 801, Amy.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Joe, it's all yours.
All right, thank you, I'm going to make the assumption that the trustees have all received a copy of the offer and have that in front of you, wrapping, going into it in detail. I'll just give some generalities. So we've had this on the market for some time.
we've had this on the market for some time, as you all know. We had it previously priced at a hundred ninety-nine thousand. We reduced it to a hundred and forty-nine thousand. I think about six months ago, I wanna say. And uh, the offer is for a hundred and twenty, uh twenty percent under the list, current listed price. We happen to have an appraisal, a fee appraisal on this property. Commercial land is somewhat difficult to to value, frankly. But the only other interest we've had on this for the trustees that were not involved at the time were for marijuana-related applications. We've had two different offers for that. And uh, at least one of those was at the full asking price of a hundred ninety-nine at that time. So um, as a transaction broker, uh my obligation is to present all offers and um present the uh offer as the buyer uh has directed me to do, which is what you see. By way of explanation, uh Dave Murdock is the um, well, let me start with Brad Lassiter, who, um, Brad, you can correct me if I'm mistaken, but my understanding is you're brokering the transaction between the end national tenant and the developer, bringing those two parties together to construct the property and then the tenant to enter into a lease with the developer who will also be the landlord and the property owner. Dave Murdock, um, and North Point Construction and Development Company out of Utah, uh have been identified as the developer for, proposed developer for this. Uh, I will let them go into detail with regard to questions that I'm sure you have regarding use and um details with respect to the construction. But um, that's sort of it. In terms of interest on this property, other than those that I've mentioned, I have received a few calls. I did a diagnostic evaluation today. We've had thirty-two views in the past thirty days online, uh which course where most of the uh transaction activity is gonna show. Uh, of those, the vast majority were were between March twenty-sixth and April fifth, uh roughly the time that this offer was being formulated. The um, some of you are aware that perhaps are aware, I know Jeff is, that we've been in discussions for this proposed use uh with the proposed tenant for, I think somewhere around nine months now. Um, the reasons for the delay ultimately came down to, and again, Brad, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but um the original developer that was identified to develop the property on behalf of the national tenant, um, had a partner that ultimately had a conflict of interest with the proposed end user. And they were hopeful of having that resolved, but um we learned relatively recently, I think about uh two weeks ago roughly, that um, that was not gonna be able to be resolved. And at that point, another developer being at that point was identified and uh acted quickly to get an offer on the table. And that's the one that you see in front of you now. So I'll leave it at that and leave it open to questions that um staff or any of the trustees have for myself, Dave or Brad.
This is Dave Murdock. I am on. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes.
Just making sure, I guess. Um, I don't really have any questions. What about you guys?
Hi, Dave. We, we can hear you. Did?
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if he had something he wanted to present.
Yeah, Dave or Brad, would you have any information you'd like to add to this discussion at this time?
Well, I know there were some questions. I had a conversation with Joe today. This is Dave Murdock speaking. Uh, there were some questions that uh Joe had. I think I answered those questions. Uh, one of the questions that he had was uh was, were we willing to disclose who the uh end user would be on the project? And typically, I don't have a problem with that, but before I do that, I would like to have a signed contract. Uh, the contract is not and has no affiliation or association whatsoever with marijuana. And uh, is a national, is a national credit tenant.
Okay.
I would add that I believe the use is a use by right under the existing code. I don't think it will require any variances or special use permit, to the best of my understanding. Uh, there were some other questions, Dave and Mike, that you had raised that we discussed on Friday. Those are the ones that I discussed with Brad and Dave today. I don't know how you wanna approach uh those. Do you want me to uh kind of lead that discussion for Brad and Dave to address those questions?
I, I think that would be appropriate. Uh, again, you know, the, the purpose of the town using taxpayer money to acquire this property is as a, an economic development tool. And, you know, the reason we're looking to sell the property is to facilitate economic development. And I think there's some questions surrounding uh, you know, what's going to go on this property, how quickly it will go up and guarantees that if the town were in or into it, to enter into a contract to sell the land that, you know, that there actually would be construction that occurred as opposed to, you know, the land continuing to sit vacant.
Yeah.
So Dave, maybe you could um walk the um, the town members through the process of that would occur, assuming that um we reached contract for the acquisition. Um, could you walk through the steps that happen next and maybe also elaborate a little bit on your experience in working with this end tenant?
Yes, I, I have been a, what we refer to as a preferred developer for this particular user first, a, a number of years. And I have built uh many stores uh in the Rocky Mountain area. I'm, I'm building right one in California right now. I'm building one in Idaho. Uh, I just completed two uh other, uh, three others, I'm sorry, in the Rocky Mountain area. And uh uh, and the, the process is uh, a, a process where we uh buy land, uh, we negotiate a lease, and then we build the building and then lease it back to the, the uh, the end user or the tenant of a long-term basis. And um, this is what we plan on doing here. So we wouldn't, we will be the owner. Uh, we will be the builder and the owner uh on the project. And uh, but before we can actually uh start to spend any money or make any uh long-term commitments, we have to have a lease signed. Uh, the uh process uh usually will take two to three months to get that uh lease, uh to get the, that lease negotiated, get it signed. Once it's signed, excuse me, I'm, I'm kinda losing my voice here a little bit, so you'll have to excuse me, but uh uh, once the lease is signed, then we move rapidly. Uh, usually the uh, the only issue that uh, we have problems with after the lease is signed is getting permits issued by the municipality. Uh, we don't, uh, we do not spend the money to purchase uh plans or civil drawings until after the lease is signed. It will usually take us another uh, uh, three weeks to four weeks to get that work done. Uh, that work is all done by uh preferred uh architects and uh engineers uh who are approved by the vendor, so they're done fairly rapidly. And um, once they are done, we present them to the municipality for permitting. And uh, from there, you know, depending on, it depends on the uh, on the particular municipality as to whether that's a short period or a long period.
So Dave or Brad, I'll throw this out to either one of you. Um, how did Silk come to be on the radar for this particular um prospect and tenant?
This is a seed area that has been, that's been determined by the uh, by the end user. They give us periodically a list of different uh uh communities that they want us to take a look at. Um, this has been a, this has been on their list. They refer to the seed communities, and this has been on that, uh Silk has been on the, on the uh, on this list for a while, as I think was previously explained.
What expectations does the tenant have then, once um, once you do reach agreement on a lease in terms of timing?
Well, normally, uh, you know, we, normally it's gonna take, uh, again, uh, two to three, uh, three months before we had to sign lease. And I say, there, there have been occasions when, uh, w- once we have uh the property under contract, uh, and, and part of the process there is it has to go to uh corporate for, for uh, for approval before uh the lease can be signed. And sometimes that takes, that takes a short period of maybe two to three weeks, and other times it takes, uh, can take up to two to three months. I say three months, uh, because uh, uh, I don't, I wouldn't wanna say, you know, a month or two months and then have it take three and uh and, and disappoint, uh, you know, or make promises we can't keep.
Sure. And so once a lease gets signed, uh, does the tenant have expectations for um a date um for the opening? Store opening?
Uh, oh yes, and that's all, that's all incorporated into the lease.
Typically.
Uh, well, that, again, that depends on, on, on the community. We have, we have really stiff penalties, so when we negotiate the lease, if we don't deliver in time, we have very stiff penalties, so we make sure that uh we have more than the anticipated amount of time that we think we can build it in. Uh, but typically, once the uh, uh lease is signed and the permits are issued, it takes us about between four to five months before we turn the store over to the tenant to come in and, and do their uh put in their point of purchase material, their, their cash wraps and so forth. And then uh, they, they do their own signage and, and we then uh they, they would then open the store. So typically, after permits are issued, it will generally take about six months before the store opens.
Okay, so theoretically, um, you could have a store open by fall, about three months roughly, let's assume for the lease. That takes us from April, May, June, July. And another uh, four months or five months gets us to late fall, conceivably. Is that, is that correct?
That, that, and, and believe me, I would uh prefer it be sooner because I don't wanna be building in Colorado in the winter. I've done it. I've done it too many times.
Sure, sure. But you're compelled by the town to meet certain timelines and obligations for completion.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, and then um, with respect to the pro forma, uh, for the tenant identifying this site and, and based on experience, do they have sales projections for this particular location?
Uh, they, they do, and they, they're, they're fairly, they're fairly uh tight-lipped on, on sharing that. I, I do, I do know that you know, based, uh, based on a conversation that I've had with uh, um, one of their uh regional rep, the real estate representatives, I'd say that they're projecting uh annual sales initially in about the, you know, one point three to one point five billion dollar range.
Okay. Um, Brad, um, anything to add?
Uh, oh, sir, Dave's pretty well covered it.
Um, I have a, I have a quick question for Dave. Dave, this is Kyle. So just to expand on what Joe's been talking about. So when you guys effectively, you know, close on a piece of property and own it, is there ever a scenario when you get to that point that you're not building on that land? And have you guys ever come across a point where you do acquire a piece of property and just hold it?
No, I've never done that, and I'm not in the business of land banking a problem.
No, I, I get that. That goes along with Joe's, Joe's talking about the tenants, you know, expectations of, you know, when the building, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanna make sure that there's not.
Yeah, we, we, we don't, we, I, I won't, uh, I, 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 I won't sign the lease until I, unless I know I've got a deal. And once I've got a deal, I'm you know, I put the pedal to the metal, the full throttle.
Yep.
I go, I wanna, I wanna get going on as soon as I can.
Yeah. And then just to be really clear on your process, so you are, you negotiate and sign the lease with your tenant while you're still under contract on the piece of property, right? So you'll have, you wait until you have a fully executed lease with your tenant before you then close on the property to build their building, essentially?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. I would have, I would have to have a fully negotiated and, and signed lease before I would close on the property.
Okay, yep.
I was gonna ask that.
Yeah, yeah. That makes sense.
Question I was gonna ask, that's good. Hey, Joe?
Yes.
Dave's being very kind. Dave and I have been building for this, for this tenant for almost twenty-two years now.
Oh, a long time.
I mean, we've, this is not our first time and
Sure.
Been going on since almost two thousand, so.
Great. Now, that's good to know. That's different than a couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions for?
I have a couple, but I'm, I'm happy to wait.
Shoot, are they?
Joe being, are they?
Are they executive session questions or are they now?
I, no, I don't think they're executive session questions. I guess my, my overall concern, I have two primarily. We're not being told the who, the what, the when. And we're also being asked to provide a discount. I guess I'm just not seeing any incentives on the town side, so can someone clear that up for me? What's? They won't tell us even what industry it's in.
Well, I, here's, here's how I take that part of it, and then you guys can chime in as you want. So I think Joe made the point, and I think the reason he made that point was to maybe answer your question. So I don't think they have to disclose that to us. Um, and if it's a use by right, frankly, it doesn't even matter at that point because we've structured our town code, you know, in our zoning with the, the uses we want in certain areas, right? So I think that if it did need a special use permit or it needed some other special permissions to be, they would certainly tell us what it is and then say, hey, are you okay with this? Because we're gonna need your okay. So I think that's part of it. Um, I think they probably don't wanna disclose it at this point because they don't want rumors to be spread about whether this is coming or not in case the deal doesn't happen. So, you know, that could happen. And then I think to your second point, I think that that's an executive session discussion.
Okay.
So, and you guys are welcome to give your input on that, but that's how I read that, so.
Could we clarify too, the zoning for that lot?
Well, so, oh, yeah. Um, exact zoning there? That's a, that's a good question, Sam. I don't know.
What the zoning is and what the uses are?
Can you see it there?
I think it's B one.
Joe might have it in front of you.
I think it's B one.
B one?
I think.
I can't see that far.
To your left, a little further. Yeah.
Right there.
Right there.
B one.
Yeah.
Now, now, man, Joe, Joe, this is again Dave Murdock speaking, but you might wanna ask Joe the question. I, I think the uh in our conversations, I've been told that uh our use does meet your zoning requirements.
Yep.
Is that not correct, Joe?
Uh, that's my belief, yes.
Yeah.
So I think that's probably why you're not getting that answer.
Hey, Joe, one more thing. I can say with a hundred percent certainty and with Dave's approval, that this use we're proposing is a hundred percent retail.
Okay.
So that's as far as we can go so far, but you could contractually put that in there somehow, but we divulge that very, very soon. And uh, I don't think David would have any problem doing that.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And um, to the comment, um, so the who is, I believe, the only unknown variable. I'm not at liberty to discuss it. Simply because I've been asked not to, as a point of confidentiality. Uh, it's not a matter of what I wanna do or don't wanna do. But to the point of the what, uh, you're being told it's retail, that's compliant with zoning. And uh, when, uh, I thought we covered that pretty well.
Yep.
Yeah, cuz one, if we're to fall through and they didn't get the lease and they wouldn't buy the property and it would go back to us anyway.
That's correct. Yep, you got it. And then like you guys are okay with, I think, his second point. I think that's an executive session.
I think that is an executive session, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think I have any other questions.
I don't think I have any other questions for you guys, no. I, I actually appreciate all the information.
Absolutely.
More information than I expected to actually get from a potential purchaser of this property. You know, really, it's, they, they could've came in here and just said they wanna buy the piece of property and, and go from there. So I think they've actually given us a fair amount of information. That should guide us in a way to help make a decision on where we wanna go with this, so.
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any other prospects. That point wasn't brought up, but um, I did mention the uh, the activity level's been pretty minimal. I don't know of anyone else that uh, at this point would be imminently interested. That might be worth consideration as well.
That's, I think, really relevant information, yeah.
Yep.
It's like just disclosing all your cards on the table, though. Let, let the buyer know that no one else wants it.
They also can look at that information, see it as well.
I'm sure they love hearing that.
I know.
In the end, it's a negotiation, though.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's our people, piece of property as a town and we choose to do what we want with it, so.
Thanks.
So yeah. All right. Does staff have any more information or questions that we need to discuss at this time?
I, I have one question for uh, for Mr. Murdock. So the contract has a six-month due diligence period, uh, which is a fairly lengthy period of time. Uh, in addition to getting the lease, what other due diligence items might, oh shh.
Well, once I get uh, the, uh, yeah, an agreement and we have a, have a signed lease, then I will get a environmental report, unless you already have one. But I will have to secure an environmental report. And at that point in time, uh, I would have to see whether or not uh, that dictated whether or not I need to do, whether or not the, the phase one was sufficient and adequate or whether I needed to go to a phase two. And if I needed to go to a phase two, you know, the, the reasons are obvious. And then we would have to sit down and figure out how we were gonna address those issues. So usually, any additional time that I would need beyond that would be uh, securing and determining um, you know, what steps need to be taken in terms of any environmental issues. I lose everyone.
Nope, we're here.
Nope, we're here.
Nope, just, we got it.
Just pondering that one.
Oh, okay.
Is it?
Yep, that answers that.
Does that make, does that make sense?
Sure does.
Yep, yeah.
But if, let me, just so you know, I mean, uh, I would like to, I'd like to have this thing uh, done and opened before the snow flies. Uh, that's, I, I have a lot of incentive to, it's uh, it's more expensive to build. And uh, and I have a tremendous incentive here because uh, you know, I, I'm not only the builder, but I'm the owner. And I want this to uh, I, I, I would rather this happen sooner than later.
Makes sense, yeah.
The whole process be sooner.
Right.
So. If I could make it happen quicker, I will.
So that would.
I, I, I do have another question. What, what type of construction are you proposing? Would this be modular that would be brought in from offsite? Or is this gonna be stick-built construction?
No, it'll be po, it'll be modular.
Okay.
It'll be, it's a, yeah, it's PMB.
What's that?
Pre, uh, pre-engineered manufactured building.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Um, this is Mayor Rock. I have one question for, I guess it'd be for Joe and for Dave. If you do the environmental assessment and it comes up clean, will we have, would we be looking at potentially moving the closing date sooner?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yes.
All right.
Sounds like it hinges on that in their lease negotiation.
Yeah, that, yeah, right.
All right. Okay, I have no more questions.
Same, I don't either.
Okay. All right, well, thank you everyone for joining us and uh.
Thank you. Well, this is Dave Murdock. I'm signing off and I'm gonna hang up unless, unless you got any more questions?
No, thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
And thank you, Brad.
All right.
Thanks, you guys, much.
Bye, bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
All right. I think that's it for now. We'll discuss anything else in the executive session, so. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Greater Roaring Fork Valley Housing Coalition Discussion. And I will turn this over to Administrator Lehman.
You may have read uh, about this effort in the paper. There's been a few articles about it. Uh, the um, uh, the, several of the towns in the, well, several of the towns in the Roaring Fork Valley had uh, had applied for a DOLA grant on uh, housing, original housing needs. And at the same time, uh, the town of Silt and Parachute were, had banded together to apply for the same grant. It was really all about, it was a kind of a, uh, I didn't write down the name of the grant, but it was a recovery grant um, that, that addressed a lot of things beside housing, included some things like marketing, some things, things like that also. We didn't get ours because we didn't have a, a whole region. Rifle and Newcastle had decided to set that one out. And um, uh, everybody in the Roaring Fork Valley pulled together and they got that grant. And then as they started to move forward with it, they decided they wanted to include the Colorado River Valley in it, uh, in their, their work. And so they invited the towns of Parachute, Rifle, Silt, Newcastle to participate. We, we've, as a group, we've chatted a little bit. Uh, we have uh, listened to some of their uh, conversation. We were, we expressed a lot of, um, I think reluctance to chip in $10,000 because that was the, uh, that was, they wanted that originally just to kind of a, to establish some seed money to start paying for an executive director and a bunch of people to, or I don't know that much people, an executive director to kinda help run that organization. Um, I think most of us and, and including um, me, uh, express some uh, reluctance to really get involved at that level. But recently, they, we had a, a Zoom meeting a couple of weeks ago and they have basically backed off on that, uh, that, that need to have that $10,000 upfront. I think they want to uh, not have that barrier uh, for us to participate. I think the big thing is, and I wrote it here in the, in the recommendation is, um, well, in the, in the summary here, is that our objectives, the Roaring Fork Valley objectives and the Colorado River Valley objectives as it relates to housing are really two different things. Theirs is to put housing where the jobs are, ours is to put jobs where the housing is. Um, or put another way, we would like to develop more housing so that potential commerce and industry would have a place to house their workers. So, um, you know, I, I kinda, I told a couple folks that um, involved in this that if they wanted to come down here and build housing uh, for us to attract more local business and industry and commerce, we'd be all about that. But I don't think that's the goal there. In fact, we'd chip in twice as much. But I think it is important to kinda stay involved in this uh, effort. Because, you know, there might be some reasons to sign on for some big idea that has been yet to be discovered. I always say that housing, if, you know, this housing crisis we're in, if it was, if it was that easy to, to solve, would've been done a long time ago. But, you know, maybe that one person hasn't shown up yet with that grand idea or the synergy hasn't happened. I don't know for sure. But I think it's uh, I think now that they've kind of uh, taken that $10,000 uh, that requirement off the table, I think we really need to at least, you know, pay attention preferrily. But to, I wanted to let you all know where we've been with this. Um, it's been going pretty much all of this year, uh, you know, for three or four months. And I haven't brought it to you because I kinda knew with that, I, I, I mean, I guessed what the idea or what the thought would be about contributing $10,000 for something like that that's probably gonna happen in the Roaring Fork Valley. So I waited a little bit until we had a better idea of what it was gonna look like, so. There you have it. Um, I'm, I'm willing, of course, to uh, take part in it uh, and to the extent that other staff members might need to, you know, weigh in either financially or from a, uh, from a uh, community development standpoint, I thought it'd be good for us to stay involved, so. And then just report back to you as appropriate.
Yep, that's good.
Sounds good to me.
Yep. I like it.
Sounds good.
Perfect. Lots of head nods. I like it.
There you go.
Moving forward.
Easy, quick.
As we can, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Senior Programs Contribution Refund Distribution Discussion. I'll turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I have um, options for you. We have the RSPP, which is Retired Senior Volunteer Program. We have um, Lift Up, we have uh, the River Center. RSPP offers classes that um, let continuing education for seniors. They um, offer volunteer opportunities for seniors. They'll do um, like tax preparation. Then Lift Up, of course, does um, food uh, bank-type things where they provide food for seniors. Whether it be at the meals, sometimes they'll provide um, boxes for them. Or at Lift Up locations in the valley, there are um, times where seniors can go and get food there. Then there's the River Center, which can do um, housing and utility assistance, and they're based out of um, Newcastle. And then staff also discussed possibly doing um, vouchers like we did when COVID first hit, where we can get vouchers for local um, food establishments and um, gas establishments and give those directly to seniors so that we know it's affecting the seniors in Silt specifically. Staff recommends doing the vouchers, um, but we'll answer any questions you might have.
Can I ask you a quick question, Amy?
Yeah.
Yes.
Why did you not lead off with the best answer first?
It was the last thing that came up in our discussions, so I figured I'd do.
I, I liked that one the best, my, in my opinion, cuz A, it gets directed to the seniors quickly and B, it's also gonna put money in our local businesses, so it's a win-win for everybody. I think it's the best one.
Me too, like, no doubt.
Hundred percent.
And when we did vouchers through COVID, like, we ran out of them quick, too, if I remember right.
We did.
Yeah.
And so there's a $1,450 uh, refund, so to speak. And I, if we add an additional $50, then we'd be able to get 75, $20 vouchers.
So you're gonna give us that $50?
Pardon?
You're gonna give us the $50?
It's gonna, it's gonna come out of the budget.
I can absolutely give you the, I gave, yes, I can absolutely give you $50.
A donation on the record. So yes, so let's do the vouchers, the vouchers for sure.
Yeah, the vouchers is awesome.
Yes.
Definitely rounded up. Win, 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 win.
Do you need an official motion on that or is that just enough to hear that we all want to do the vouchers? Is that good?
It is an action.
Action item, so yeah, we should go ahead and make something.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to use the Senior Programs Contribution Refund Distribution to get 75, $20 vouchers.
Second.
All right. We gotta motion my mayor, Pro Tem Knott, to use the Senior Programs Contribution Refund Distribution to get 75, $20 vouchers, seconded by Trustee Brittenall. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Don't go far, cuz next up is the February 2022 Knife Financial Report.
I got it right in front of me.
All right.
So um, we're doing well on our uh, sales taxes. You can, if you haven't noticed, we're about, what, $14,000 more than we did last year for the month of February. So we're doing well there. We're at uh, 21% with um, 16% of the year having elapsed. So we're doing well with that and use taxes right along those same lines as well. We are pretty close on our trash and um, irrigation and water and wastewater services. We're pretty close to um, where we thought we would be in the budget. We're a little bit ahead of the uh, 16%. We're doing well with um, our revenues and our expenditures in almost all of the um, funds short of the Housing Authority. We, I can't seem to get them to get us the check for the month within that month. It all, we always, it seems to be always behind, um, to where February is, we're not depositing in the bank until March. So you don't see those funds until the Marches, uh, financial statements. I think we're doing, we're on track, really, really on track for this year. We're doing well and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Nope, I don't have any questions.
Nope, looks pretty good.
Numbers look great.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Uh, next up is the 2022 Events and Recreation Update, and I will turn this over to Community Development Manager, Nicole Centeno.
It's a mouthful, huh?
It is a whole mouthful.
Um, so we wanted to give a quick overview of the Silt Rec 2022 so far. Um, we had our winter boys' basketball season that started in January. We had two third and fourth grade teams and two fifth and sixth grade teams with a total of 38 players. And we had full participation from the Colorado River League um, this season with all towns being able to join without restrictions. Um, and then I wanted to give you a quick overview of what that league is. Um, so Silt participates in the Colorado River League for basketball. This league is a, is running as a committee, which is formed by the recreation directors from the following towns. That includes Newcastle, Silt, Rifle, Grand Valley, Debeck and Meker. This committee works to coordinate league play for towns that don't have enough teams to offer in-house games. Each individual rep department still registers players, collects fees and coordinates practices. Then the league takes turns developing game schedules. Each town has a hosting weekend that they're responsible for coordinating game officials and managing. And there's no fee to be a part of the league outside of sharing responsibilities. Um, the Colorado River League also offers opportunities for basketball, baseball, softball, volleyball and flag football. Um, so that's the league that we're currently part of for basketball. And then we have started micro soccer. We launched micro soccer last week. And that has the largest enrollment numbers that we've ever seen up to this point. We went from seven teams to 11 teams. And we're servicing 120 kids this season.
Wow.
So yeah, we're excited that, we're excited to see those numbers and we're excited to see all those smiling faces on the field also. Um, as far as future programming, we are looking into offering T-ball this summer. And then we'll offer a fall, a fall micro soccer program. And what the Parks Record Culture Master Plan survey had indicated would also be an interest for the community is fifth and sixth grade um, volleyball. And then we do offer girls' basketball and we had also um, learned on the master plan survey that youth basketball would be of high interest as well and that would be like the little hoopers. Um, the basketball that we currently offer is third, fourth, fifth and sixth. So the little hoopers would be kinder through second grade. Um, that is the programming that we have for this season. And then if you look at the screen now, we have um, just some tentative numbers. We, we have more. We, we have more columns that we're gonna be adding to this, but for now, it kind of gives you an overview of the participation, since the town has taken over recreation from SISA. Um, it, there's the number of participation, or participants, the number of volunteers, and then the cost of refs and table workers, um, up to this point. And that concludes our recreation side of everything. And then we have special events as well. Um, we are, we are eager and ready for our Easter egg hunt on Saturday. And we've had amazing volunteers that came in and helped us stuff over eight thousand Easter eggs.
Nice.
So that was super exciting that staff didn't have to, have to fill a ton of eggs this season. Um, and so that'll be held at Roy Moore and Stony Ridge as well. And then we have our silt cleanup coming, we have our Arbor Day tree planting. Um, we have been getting calls and emails about the advertisements for silt on sale already. And then we jump into the summer months with all of our, um, fun activities, from movie nights to concerts, um, Camp Badge, the farmer's market that we're doing at Veterans Park this year. Um, so we're excited for some of those changes coming. And then we are doing a bike rodeo this year. And, and then we have Hay Day on there, as well as fall events with another silt cleanup, the Main Street Trick or Treat, Family Fall Fest and Chili Cook-Off, and then Tree Lighting, and Polar Express with City on Santa. So we are excited on the recreation and event side of everything, and we look forward to a fun season.
Kinda leaves me breathless, too.
I know.
Love to see all that going on, love to see the enrollment numbers for the recreation programming as well.
That's huge.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah, they are increasing substantially.
All right.
And while we're looking at those numbers, thank you to all those volunteers.
You bet.
Step up and help out with that, too.
Yes, we were, we were very excited that we didn't even have to do a ton of advocating once we realized the numbers that we had. It was one email that got sent out, and volunteers were stepping up without, without any begging, so.
Nice.
So I was, I was really happy to see the, um, the willingness for the parents to step forward and help coach. It's really great.
Do you happen to know how many teams other towns put into the boys' basketball for the winter?
Um, for the boys' basketball, Rifle had three teams total, four, fifth, and sixth, and two teams for third and fourth. And then Newcastle had two and two. Debeck had one fifth and sixth grade team. Parachute had, I believe, two and two, and then Meeker had two, fifth and sixth, and they do third and fourth in-house.
Okay.
So we're right up, we're, we're pretty average with what other towns have. Rifle typically has one or two teams more than everybody else 'cause of their, um, their population.
Yeah. I mean, for Silt to be able to even have the same number of teams as Newcastle.
Yeah.
Lot of kids doing stuff, which is great, so.
We do, yeah, the kids are definitely, um, participating more in sports now than what I've seen in the past.
Nice.
Yeah.
Awesome, any other comments or questions?
No, thank you so much.
Great work.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Nicole, we're gonna get you out of here, uh, earlier next time, that's a genuine issue.
Yeah.
No, it's fun being here, thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is Administrator and Staff Reports. Turn this back over to Administrator Lehman.
I'm gonna be real quick, 'cause I know we still have a lot to do. Um, I wanna highlight a couple things on my staff report, actually more than a couple, but I'm just gonna do it very quick. Uh, I wanted you to note the cooperative recreation programming that we talked about. Newcastle is interested, we're gonna, I'm gonna talk with the, they're, they're interested in studying some ideas for coop, uh, some kind of cooperative programming. Don't have any idea what that, uh, uh, will end up, uh, taking, but I'm gonna be working with the manager over there, uh, over the next few weeks to come up with a framework, and, and, uh, we'll meet together, uh, or, well, we'll see how that all comes together. Lodging tax passed, congrats, there's another sixty thousand we'll be able to spend, or, or thereabouts, spending on parks and recreation and so forth, and beautification of town. Uh, Chamber of Commerce says it's state of the community coming up next week, on the nineteenth, if any of you would like to participate, uh, in that. I've, I think I bought another table, so, um, you, we can, you can join in on that. OHV progress, uh, we're gonna be on, uh, on the ordinance, uh, uh, on the county's agenda very soon with an ordinance revision, county ordinance revision that will allow Silt residents to drive OHVs on a couple of the county roads, and I know we've been working on that for a long time, so it's good to see that that is moving forward. Strategic planning coming up on May second, hope to see you all there, five-thirty to nine at Silt Town Center. And then, um, the Town Hall Speaker Series coming up, uh, our very own Derek Henryhand has, uh, agreed to participate as a, oh, he acts like he doesn't know. Uh, as a, as a panelist on, uh, a, a broadband discussion in the Colorado River Valley, which should be pretty interesting. Okay, that's all I have, anybody have any questions about anything else, or any one of those things I can answer? Okay?
No.
Nope.
About any, anything else, any other, uh, staff reports that you wanted to ask any questions of anybody else?
Um, the only, I had a question for Trey. Um, we had a citizen send in a lumber quote for wood at the gazebo. Um, it's my understanding that gazebo needs more than just some wood, correct? Okay.
Yes, it does, and we haven't made plans yet on exactly what we're gonna do. And it was always the intent when we took it down to have the plan to put something else up. We weren't gonna take it down and just leave it down.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd like to get that out to the citizens. The plan is to take it down and put something back. It's not to take it down and leave it as nothing. Um, we know that's an important building to the citizens of Silt, and it gets used, so. Um, full intentions are putting something back there that is better than what is there now.
Thanks for bringing that up, I did mean to mention that, too. Um, and we discussed it in our, uh, subcommittee meeting this afternoon with the, uh, Parks, Recreation, and Culture, uh, uh, Subcommittee. And so nobody's, nobody's gonna tear it down, uh, immediately, and, uh, we certainly have plans to replace it with something better.
Okay, thank you very much, I got.
I have one, uh, Trey, you guys start at the, uh, boat ramp, the build-out? I think I saw some excavators there today.
Yes, we started that today.
Nice, uh, what are you guys doing with all the trees? You're not just throwing them away, are you, that you knocked down?
Um, the little trees are already gone, we've got three big ones that will come down to widen that access road. But we haven't, we haven't, we're waiting on one more bid to come in on taking them down, but no, we haven't decided what we're gonna do with them.
Yeah, 'cause it'd be nice to reuse them, you know, a lot of people burn wood in the wintertime. Just an idea.
Sounds good.
Got a question for Trey, who owns that fence along Highway Six? Cross from the pole stuff, you do? I know, I just.
Right there, Lion's Residential?
Yeah, that whole, all that.
That belongs to the homeowners.
It does.
Some of them are all kicked out on the bottom?
Well, there's some of them, uh, it's, some of it's starting to get pretty ragged. I just didn't know who's responsible for that, or is someone breaking off, they're sagging down, pieces falling off, and starting to look a little ragged along the highway, so.
Yep. I believe all that belongs to the homeowners or the HOA.
Oh, the, there is an HOA in there?
I don't know if there is or not, but it's, I know it's not the, I know a few years ago the town didn't make it an agreement to go paint it for them.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
And that was the last we were going to do, because the fence does not belong to the town.
Okay. All right, that was my question.
All right, um, updates from the board and board comments, we'll start with trustee Henryhand.
Yep. I'm good.
Good, Brittenall?
Nothing this time.
Trustee Poston?
Um, just a quick comment, uh, as a board, we are here to serve the citizens and also to help assist the town staff with any way that we can help support you so you can continue to do an amazing job that you guys do every day. So as a reminder, as we come in with these reports, keep in mind that if there is anything that we can do that will help support what you do for the citizens of Silt, please do so. We are here and we, we want to hear, uh, the citizens and the employee show.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Seaver?
Um, I do have a comment to make, and I'm not picking on anybody in particular, but I have noticed last weekend and the weekend before, it seems like Friday, Saturday, and Sundays, there is comments on Facebook about the speeders in town, people to slow down, and it seems like it's on Sixteenth, Seventh Street, and Grand. I know the police are busy, but it's, like, this weekend was different people. I don't know what we can do, but I, I, it's a comment just about every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday that speeders, and, um, like I say, I'm not blaming anybody, but it's something, it is a problem. I know, uh, just tonight, the kids were at the soccer field, and there was parents walking back and forth, and there's a car just blew right through the four-way stop on Sixteenth and Grand, didn't even slow down. And we're gonna get some kids hit, and that's what people are posting, you know, please slow down. The kids are out on bikes, and, um, like I say, I don't know, it just, it's been brought to my attention by a couple of people that voted for us, and, you know, like I say, I'm not picking on anybody, but I know the police are stressed, but I think it's something we gotta address, something that's gotta be done. It's, it's every weekend, if you follow Facebook, it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, there's posts on there, people pleading for people to slow down. So, I just brought that out, I don't know what we can do, like I say, it's something we gotta think about.
For sure.
You know, we got enough police, I know everybody's busy, but the voters are concerned, and I, it's gonna happen. And it seems like it's them three streets.
Yeah, like, those are just the three main streets that most people use in town, so that's a lot of traffic in a little town, and, um, it's, I mean, it happens in every town, or every street in town, so. I'm sure our administrator will pass that along to the people that need to hear it and see what we can do.
Yeah, so that's my comment.
All right.
Yep, actually, I agree with Jerry, I was gonna mention the same thing about speed. Um, two, two things I was gonna maybe mention, I think during the afternoons when we have the microsoccer going on, uh, over on Flying Eagle Park, I think it would be nice to maybe have some additional police presence over there, just for that exact reason. There's cars lined up on both sides of the street, and for just people that go too fast, I mean, having a police presence over there, like, it'll help them slow down. And then maybe some, something simple, uh, Grand and Sixteenth on the stop sign, I don't know what it takes to get that stop sign to flash red, you know, around the outside of it, to really catch people's attention there, so they slow down coming from Orchard, you know what I mean, through there, that might really help. Um, so, yeah, if you guys hear this, just slow down, small town, there's kids everywhere. And, um, the other thing, if you guys didn't notice, our brand-new street sweeper was out and about cleaning up the streets, that thing is sweet.
Yep.
I mean, we had so much rock and debris out there, how do you guys like that?
It's working really good.
It's gotta make a huge difference.
It does.
Streets are clean, it looked good out there, I'm glad we got that, and, um, the only thing on that is, I don't know when they plan on knocking down that mound of rocks, you know, that they put on that path that go up in Mesa View, you know, up by the mill, I know they dump it right there, so they probably just need to go out there and smooth it down.
Wow.
So Sixteenth Street, like halfway up when you're going to Mesa View Estates, I think they dump the rocks that they suck into that thing.
They shouldn't have.
I think they do, but they usually just use it to, like, use it as road base, don't they? Usually smooth that out right there?
Not on the road.
No, not on the road, it's a trail.
Going up the, that like that.
There's a gate right there, right? I don't know how to explain it.
The water tower?
Oh, the gate that comes off of Sixteenth and goes up by the mailboxes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I.
There's a giant mound of rocks right there, and I think they came out of the street sweeper, so. But they do it every year, I think, but they usually just go out there and, like, smooth it down. Anyway, you can.
We have done it before, yeah, as like a base on that.
Exactly, yeah, so, there you go.
Learn something every day.
Yeah, and when you get a, we don't have to do it now, but maybe you can make a note for the next meeting. I don't know if you have any feedback on that, you know, hill falling apart on Sixteenth Street, 'cause it's getting worse.
We talked about that last week, right?
Yes.
Maybe we, maybe we leave the potholes on Grand bigger, so they slip on.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Instead of fix them, just kinda make them a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
As you may know, we have, uh, money, uh, budgeted in the twenty-twenty-two budget to start design and engineering on Grand Avenue.
Oh, I was just gonna, somebody had that.
There's a comment about that.
Something I'm gonna write about, uh, it's not just a simple.
No, 'cause we were talking about going, like, the whole length through town on that thing.
And there's so much underground utilities on that.
Yeah, there's a lot of infrastructure underneath.
Engineering to make that.
That needs fixed before we put it in.
Very expensive, it's not a, it's not just an overway.
Got it.
So we, we need, do need to do a better job of, uh, of educating people on that particular road, 'cause I know people, and, you know, we did, uh, I know Trey and his guys were out there, well, Trey's subcontractor was out there filling potholes with the new product, uh, just recently, so we're gonna anxious to see how that's gonna work.
Seemed to work so far.
No, 'cause like, between Ninth and where the old laundromat, that's, that's really starting to come up, ramp up and.
And that's, I think we went from Ninth to Sixteenth with that black mastik, like the state was using.
Using.
And that was five hundred pounds of material we used in just that stretch.
Wow.
And it takes, we did use a subcontractor, because it takes a specialized equipment to put it down.
Okay. Great.
All right, the only thing I've got is, um, of course, it goes back to the Facebook thing. There's all these posts on Facebooks about that, that the board expects us to come down to the meeting or watch it live. Yes, that is how the board communicates with the public, is we have a meeting twice a month, please come down and talk to us, please watch it live, or you may call in comments.
Send an email?
Or send an email, or send a snail mail to the town, and we can get it on the official record. Facebook is not the official record of the town. Please come see us, or communicate with us so we can get it officially put down. Um, that's it.
Good.
Uh, we're gonna do an executive session, so I'll read what we need to, and then we'll take a couple minutes to get it all set up, and then we will be coming out of the executive session to finish up the regular meeting, so. I move to go into executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real, personal, or other property interest under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A, the sale of property located at, uh, one zero zero seven Highway Six and Twenty-four. I made a motion to enter a new executive session, seconded by my mayor, Pro Tem Knott. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll take two or three minutes here to get everything set up, and then we'll get this thing knocked out. Uh, the time is now ten thirty-four PM, and the executive session has concluded. No formal action was taken in the executive session. The participants in the executive session were, no one entered the executive session, and no one left the executive session. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violations of the open meeting law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Uh, seeing none, the next item on the agenda is to direct staff.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to direct the town attorney to make a counterproposal with the proposed terms.
with the proposed terms from the executive session and approve the contract subject to the buyer executing the counterproposal for the property located at one zero zero seven Highway Six and Twenty-four.
I say it.
All right. We have a motion by Trustee Brittenall to direct our town attorney to create a counterproposal. That motion was seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Not. All is in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes six to one.
Just as a point of order, Mr. Mayor, I believe that the motion had two components. One is the preparation of the counterproposal, and the second is the approval of the contract subject to the counterproposal being executed.
Correct, yes. I think that's how it was stated.
Yes.
I do have an and in there. Was that sufficient, or do I need to have?
It's, no, it's all good, just wanted to.
Okay, perfect. Just clarifying.
Clarification, okay.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion for a German.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Not to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Trustee Seifert. All is in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Aye, maybe.
That's not behind all these.
I like those top ones.